Good evening, I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, and I call to order this March 7th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. I want to ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
President.
Here.
Present.
Present.
President.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much, and certainly we all are just delighted, I think, to be back here together, have not met in person for over two years now, two years exactly. So, we're happy to be back and doing the people's business up front and personal. In that regard, we certainly extend, as we have our moment of silence, there are a lot to be thankful for and a lot of folks to remember. So, we'd like to call the name of Donna Lambeth, who was former secretary to Mayor Corpening, and then the other, did she mention, I forgot.
Oh, Robert Norrington.
Yeah, yeah, former council member Alderman, Robert Norrington's wife, passed away, so we ask you to remember them in our prayers. Please join the city council meeting in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Our sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant Michael Knight. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. We'll move to the first item, it's item H1, our honorariums.
Item H1, resolution recognizing the 2020 Winston-Salem State University Rams men's basketball team. Whereas the Winston-Salem State University Rams men's basketball team won the 2020 Central Intercollegiate Athletic Association men's basketball championship with a 63-62 win over Fayetteville State Broncos. And whereas the Rams entered the tournament with a 16-10 overall record and won three straight games against Livingston College, Clapton University, and Fayetteville State University to win the championship. And whereas the Rams were at an 11-point deficit in the final five minutes of the game and took the lead with just four seconds left to play to claim the win. And whereas their thrilling comeback win improved their overall record to 19-10. And whereas Rams coaches Cleo Hill Jr., Ricky Wilson, and Lance Beckwith have led the team to the 12th conference championship in school history. And whereas the last time the Rams won the conference championship was in 2012. And whereas there was CIA championship win, the Rams have earned an automatic bid to the 2020 National Collegiate Athletic Association Division 11 Atlantic Regional Tournament. Now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the City of Winston-Salem do hereby commend and congratulate the Winston-Salem State University men's basketball team on their Central Intercollegiate Athletic Association championship and wish the team many more years of exceptional basketball playing.
Is there a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I know there are no's, that's unanimous. We're just so delighted to be able to do this. We wanted to wait until we could do it in person. As Coach, I'm sorry, it's been two years since you won the championship, but we're just delighted and we're so proud of this school and proud of your program and the great young men who participate in that. With us tonight is the athletic director, Ethane Thomas, our head coach, Cleo Hill Jr., and sports information director, Arius Thomas.
Folks, on behalf of the city council and really the citizens of Winston-Salem, we present this resolution of appreciation and recognition to this wonderful basketball team, and not only for their athletic abilities, but also what they mean to this community, the pride that we have in it and the pride you have. So, Coach, congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of Chancellor Robinson, Coach Cleo Hill Jr., myself, A.T.M. Thomas, thank you so much for this great honor and for the opportunity to recognize this team that did so well. You know, it's been two years. It's been two years for all of us. I had just come in the door in that January, and it was really thrilling to be there, to watch that buzzer beater and to watch how we finished. Coach Hill and his staff and that team were resilient that year to play three games in a row, but the most important piece of that is they did it as a team, with a team effort. They did what they needed to in the classroom, they did what they needed to in the community to make sure that they were available for their team to play that week. And so, just so grateful and humbled to be here and for this recognition for them and for that and for your continued support, I say thank you. Mayor Joins, city council, thank you so much for the opportunity.
You're here. Again, congratulations. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of the following items. We have two zoning petitions. There's an item related to a contract as well as a closed session. The zoning petitions are listed as public hearings, and when these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, the proponents and the opponents will be each given 15 minutes for presentations and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the council will consider the items. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings are always available online on the city's website and just click on the watch meetings online option. Ms. Keeney, may we have item Z1?
Item Z1, public hearing on zoning petition of F.S. Said and Mohammed Azam from RS9 to NO- S. Property is located on the west side of Cole Road, south of Wiltown Street, located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends an oral petition.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember James Taylor. I believe he has a motion on this item.
To the mayor, mayor pro tem, and members of this illustrious council, it is my motion that we remand item Z1 to the planning board for further review.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Right, the motion is to remand this to the planning board. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Oh, see, we're going to be doing electronic voting, so, excuse me, we'll need for you to vote. Sorry about that, folks. That's unanimous. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Item Z2?
Item Z2, public hearing on zoning petition of Alan Wayne Stewart, Elizabeth Ann Burke, Valley Myers Show family trust, Myra Mize, and Rosemary Show Stewart from RS9 to RM12-S. Property is located on the north and south sides of Vest Mill Road at its western terminus located in the southwest ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. I know the proponent is here. If there's any questions, do we know if there's anyone in opposition here? Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, good evening. There is no one here in opposition.
All right. In that case, I'll close the public hearing and would recognize Councilmember Monday.
Mr. Murphy, I would like a brief presentation. I think these are exciting plans for land that's been unused for quite some time.
Mr. Murphy?
I'm not sure why that's still showing up like that on the screen, but I'll be brief. We've already heard the petitioner, who the petitioners are. This is a rezoning case of a 13.11 acre tract located on both the north and south sides of Vest Mill Road, located in the southwest ward, and the request is to rezone the piece of property to RM12-S for a multifamily project. This is the subject property shown on the legacy growth management area plan. And again, why this isn't moving, I don't know. I promise you it's on my screen. There we go. Let's just run it like this. This is a legacy growth management area plan. Again, you know, when you do things on Zoom for a while, you kind of learn that, you forget how to do it in person. It is in the GMA to suburban neighborhoods growth management area. And this is the subject property highlighted in yellow, located near Salem Parkway, I-40, again, at the western terminus of both Vest Mill and Westbrook Drive. This is the subject property highlighted, again, in yellow on the countywide aerial photos. This is looking west along Vest Mill Road towards the site. The site would be on the left. This is looking east along Vest Mill Road. The site is behind this viewpoint. This is looking west along Westbrook Drive. Site is located behind that sign in the distance. This is the area plan. The area plan does recommend this to be developed as office staff's analysis of that, given the changes in land use and the similarities in impact between multifamily and office-type uses. We felt like this was a compatible use for this area. And just as a note, as we're going through looking at our comp plan and our area plans over the next cycle, we're more than likely have to reimagine a lot of our office space in light of COVID, since we have found that folks obviously can work very well from home. So, anyway, with that, here is the site plan. It does show a number of buildings. It's an extension of a public street. There are some amenities and also some detached garages for parking, in addition to some on-street parking as well. These are the building elevations that were submitted as part of the request, and the project will be built in substantial compliance with those. And here are those garage elevations that are in some sites, some places on the site. The proposed rezoning is in keeping with the larger goals of Legacy 2030. Proposed rezoning would create a new public street that would provide additional connectivity in the immediate area. Site location is within the serviceable land area and is in proximity to other services. And the proposed plan does show excellent multimodal interconnectivity for pedestrians and, again, connecting those existing two public streets. This was heard by the planning board at their February 10, 2022, public hearing. There was one speaker in opposition, and that opposition was primarily dealt with the existing street conditions out there of both Vest Mill and Westbrook Drive, and, you know, the concern with loss of vegetation leading to perhaps increased noise from Salem Parkway. After hearing that, the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval to city council, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Murphy? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I then recognize Councilmember Monday for a motion.
Thank you for that presentation. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3515.
Second. Motion a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please enter your vote when it comes up on your screen. And it does pass unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Monday. Item Z3?
Item Z3, resolution to rescind original resolution awarding a contract and to award a new contract for turnkey solution services for the Winston-Salem Police Department Real-Time Crime Center.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any comments to make on this? I understand that there were some items left out of the original contract. Ms. Tony?
Good afternoon, mayor, mayor pro tem, and members of the council. On January 18, this was approved. There was a few items that was missing out of the total dollar amount, so this cleans up the contract. I will say the dollar amount that is to be approved tonight was in the original bid, and so they were the lowest bidder. It just was not in the paperwork.
Thank you, Ms. Tony. Any questions, Ms. Tony? I recognize Chair of Public Safety.
Mayors, members of the council, mayor pro tem, I move for approval of item Z3.
Second. Motion a second. Any further discussion? Please go ahead and vote when the item comes up. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z4?
Item Z4, closed session.
Recognize Councilmember Taylor for a motion, please.
I move that the Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A3 to consult with and provide instructions to the city attorney regarding the settlement of a claim, the settlement of Star Entertainment LLC versus the City of Winston-Salem, 21CVS 3286, and the City of Winston-Salem versus Eben Carroll et al., 21CVS 3729, and to preserve the attorney-client privilege. And, two, North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A4, and, five, along with the aforementioned statute, to approve certain closed session minutes.
Second. Motion a second. Any discussion? Please vote. And that's unanimous. We will now go into closed session. The city council will remain here, and we'd ask the audience to please excuse us. All right, thank you. So, everyone in the room is germane to this item. So, is Carter going to begin this one, or are you going to begin?
I think we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Carter.
Okay, is Julia Carter our risk administrator? Mr. Carter?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? Or do I need to take this? Yes? No? Take it off. Take it off. Okay, got it. Or maybe I just need to talk louder. Okay. All right. Good evening, mayor, pro tem, Adams, council members. So, the reasoning for me to be here tonight is to discuss the Donaldson case with you guys. I believe all of you already have a packet of information. So, I'm not going to read the memo, but all of you should have a copy of the memo, but I'm just going to kind of give you a brief overview of it, and then if you have questions, then we can go into that as well. So, this particular incident involves a sanitation vehicle. We had an employee who was picking up his carts at the end of his route. He got to a particular location where they're doing construction on Ebert, Ebert, depending on however you want to pronounce it, but I mostly call it Ebert. So, on Ebert Street, and while they were on Ebert, they were doing construction. He got out of the vehicle to move some cones because the cones were helping divide the traffic flow. And whenever he removed himself from the vehicle, he went to get the cone.
We'll vote.
We're ready.
Sandy, I'm not sure your mic is working, honestly.
Yeah, I can hardly hear.
It's on, I don't know.
But it's not loud.
I think you need to move it further, closer to you, like that.
Is this better?
No.
A little bit, not much.
You're talking so soft.
Is it, is it me?
That's you.
All right, now I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn the meeting and we will vote electronically to adjourn. And we are unanimously adjourned.